Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, Tingsboro School Committee meeting. Please be reminded that these meetings are audio and video recorded. My name is Becky Stanton and I call this meeting to order. We will start with introductions with Nate.
Hi, Nate Moreno, student representative.
Jeff Boe.
Dustine Puma.
Good evening, Mike Woodlock, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Anthony Tenrol.
Ryan McMahon.
Danielle Athanas.
Rob Mullin.
Rob McSine, Business Administrator.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will seek a motion to approve the November first, two thousand and twenty-two school committee meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that carries seven zero zero. Citizen time, if we have any citizens that would like to speak, please step right up to the mic. Just as a reminder, we do, our policy allows for two minutes and typically the committee does not respond, it's more just, you know, you can share your thoughts.
School committee members, for those of you who do not know who I am, my name is Ryan McDonough, I am a member of Tingsboro High School's class of two thousand and eighteen and I am the acting president of Tingsboro Community Theater. Since the group was registered as a nonprofit in two thousand and twenty-one, we have made it our mission to educate and enrich the surrounding community through the performing theater arts. Over the past year or so, we have performed at both the two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two block party, produced our first main stage musical this past summer in Talk Everlasting, and staged a production of Feathers and Teeth last month and we are gearing up for our second annual winter cabaret in just a couple of weeks. We are also working with Chancely Joyner of the Tingsboro Public Library to develop a show that will be a part of the children's summer series that will be directed and performed by Tingsboro High students to be performed for the Tingsboro youth. While we have certainly enjoyed the success that we have experienced with our shows, there have certainly been some bumps along the way. Being that we are a nonprofit, we rely solely on the generous donations of our supporters and the sponsorships of other community organizations such as Enterprise Bank. Saint Mary Magdalene's Paracenter has been generous enough to allow us to use their facilities for both our summer and fall production rehearsals, asking only for a small donation in return. We have managed to sustain a level of donation that allows us to continue with our work, but we are in need of assistance on the front of performance space. Our production of Feathers and Teeth was performed just down in the hall at the Donald Champion Performing Arts Center, a space that was used only for the hours of six to nine PM on Wednesday, October twelfth to the fifteenth, and one to five PM on October sixteenth. For this total of sixteen hours in space, we paid a total of two thousand and seventy-seven dollars, which is a pretty steep price tag for a show that only had audiences on the last three days listed, no concessions sold, and a show that was the same date as a Friday night football game, meaning the school was opened already, which I only know because I am an assistant coach of the football team. We are a board that is completely composed of Tingsboro Theater alumni with a large population of current TPS students that partake in our productions. Tingsboro Community Theater presents supplemental performance opportunities, which is especially important with the reduced number of productions being offered by the schools this year. Our main stage musical production is put on during the summer months when school is not in session and we do not put on shows during the spring months so that there is no conflict and maximum opportunities between the two groups. My mother, Christine Jablonsky, has served on both the Tingsboro Scholarship Trust Committee and the Grad Night Committee, both of which are not charged to use TPS facilities. After submitting an initial proposal of rental of space for next summer's show to Sharon Fairbanks, who has been unbelievably helpful with her communication and willingness to answer questions, we were discouraged by the proposed amount for using the space that rendered it cost prohibitive. With the involvement of so many Tingsboro students, we would like to approach the school committee with the hope to be considered amongst these community groups and revisit the policy on renting facilities so that we can foster a cooperative relationship with one another. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak during citizen time? We'll take that back to our policy subcommittee. Moving on to correspondence, Dr. Flanagan.
I was going to ask this time.
And for personnel, we have notifications of new hires. We have Jennifer Farmping, TES one point oh special education teacher, Estasia Fernandez, TES one point oh paraprofessional, Hector Penna, a THS second shift custodian, Sam Richardson, a THS second shift custodian, Tina Rosetti, a THS second shift custodian. Welcome to all of our new joiners. And for share the success, Nate.
Yep, so at TES, they've had lots of smiles and fun on their new playgrounds, was just recently opened, I'm sure as you all know. On behalf of the elementary school, we'd like to extend a special thank you to the town of Tingsboro voters, Board of Selectmen, School Committee, Finance Committee, and members of the Capital Asset Management Committee for making this possible. Also make sure to check out TPS social media to see some pictures of the new playground, they posted some of those recently, so. This week, students are enjoying a spirit week to kick off the annual coin drive for Adopt a Family. Tomorrow, students are encouraged to dress as their desired occupation in the future. Also, the elementary school's next session of enrichment offerings will begin soon. They're excited to bring back TES Telegram reading ambassadors and student council. Mrs. Bishop and Mrs. Korea will be offering new enrichment opportunities for students in kindergarten and grade one focused on SEL and play skills. At the middle school, staff had a focused, or good focused professional development day this past Tuesday, they led participated, they'd led and participated in many learning opportunities. Veterans Day observances took place last week, eighth grade did a focus on the history and meaning of the holiday on Monday, and on Thursday, Ms. Craig welcomed Tingsboro residents who had served in our armed services to talk about their experiences and ask some questions. TMS would like to thank all who have served and those willing to come in and talk to their students about it. Also, five seventh graders will be attending the Student Leadership Conference this Thursday to focus on leadership and how they can come back to school and improve the culture of TMS. At the high school, theater arts students recently held a fall review, great job by all involved. Thirty-three seniors were recently awarded the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. The scholarship is a merit-based program that provides a credit toward tuition for up to eight semesters or undergraduate, or of undergraduate education, excuse me, at Massachusetts State College and universities. The DECA Club attended the Massachusetts DECA Fall Leadership Conference at Bentley University as they prepare for the regional competition later this year. Congratulations to the cheer team, they placed second at the Division III Central Competition. Good luck at the state competition this weekend. Also, the Boys Cross Country Team placed second at the Division III B Championship. This is the highest finish in the boys' program history, so congratulations to them and good luck to them at All States, at the All States meet this Saturday. And lastly, congratulations to November Students of the Month, Nicholas Oscealo, Yasania Collins, Adam Durant, and Caroline Kenny, and that's it.
Thanks, Nate.
Thank you.
I will seek a motion to take nine A out of order.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that carries seven zero zero. Moving on to the first responder's presentation. Chief, thank you for joining us today, I appreciate it, it's always great to hear from you.
So I'm going to kick it off, if that's okay?
Sure.
Yeah, so I want to make sure that we don't stumble on this this week because we struggled a couple of weeks ago, but to start with what our true north is. And our true north is we value all people in our school community and we're committed to continuous growth. And I think when we talk about valuing people in our community, our school community, it starts with, starts with making sure that we have a safe learning environment for all of our students. And I'm really happy to report that Tingsboro Public Schools has a great relationship with our first responders and they've been, in my experience so far this year, amazing to work with. And so we have, as you mentioned, Chief Russell here from the Tingsboro Fire Department today, but we, we were also expecting Chief Howe from the Tingsboro Police Department to be here and I talked to him earlier today and he's like, well, I'm kind of sick and, but I'll come, I'll wear a mask, and I was like, why don't you just stay home, like, we'll take care of this for you. The last thing we want is, you know, our, our chief of police, you know, not getting the rest he needs when he, when he's not feeling well, so. So I appreciate you being here, Chief, and your willingness to be here. So I'll talk a little bit about our relationship with the police department so far this year and, and what we've been working on. Specifically, you know, if you have kids in the schools, you probably, you know, know that making sure that our emergency response protocols and procedures are in place. And so what we utilize here is, is a version of, you know, options-based protocols if we were to have an emergency situation. Sometimes it's referred to as ALICE, you may, you may be familiar with that acronym. So the police, including Deputy Chief Woods and our SRO, Bonsar, have been really instrumental in helping us and working with the admin in each school to not only talk about what that looks like, but plan our scenarios and be present at each of those so that when they walk through, they can, you know, see how it's going and then be there at a staff meeting to, you know, talk about how it went and, you know, revisit what the drill was with our staff, answer questions and so on, so we can continue to grow in our ability to, you know, be really successful at that, obviously. Hopefully, we never need to use it, but if we ever need to use it, we want to be prepared. There are more drills planned for further along this year and we've been working collaboratively and Chief Russell will talk a little bit about our monthly meetings that we've been having to strengthen our procedures. One really special event that's happening this Friday at the high school, if you've seen SRO Bonsar, you usually see her with her companion, our comfort dog, George. George is turning four this week. We're having a birthday party for George and several of his comfort dog friends from surrounding communities are coming to the party. And so this also kind of coincides with the end of the trimester here at the high school, which can be a really stressful time for our kids, you know? We try not to emphasize, you know, grades at all costs, but you know, it is a stressful time and so having a party of comfort dogs here on Friday before the Thanksgiving break is, is going to be a nice thing for our kids and if you walk around the building, you'll see a couple flyers for that, so that will be available. But I'm going to kick it over to Chief Russell now and he's, he can talk a little bit about the fire department and their collaboration with us and what we've also been working collaboratively with building administrators, the police department, and the fire department since this summer. So Chief.
Sure. Wes Russell, I'm the fire chief and the town's emergency management director and I'm excited to be, you know, part of this team that Mr. Woodlock has to take a look at the school's emergency response plans and identify some opportunities to kind of enhance those plans. I think that, as we know, the world has evolved quite a bit in the last two or three years and I think that it's, you know, a good time to take a look and see how our emergency response plans are evolving along with the, the situations that we may be facing. So I also, you know, we work great, you know, with Chief Howe and Chief Woods and the SROs, I'm looking to, you know, have the fire department also be part of that team. We're certainly going to be part of a team that responds to emergencies here, so I think it makes sense for all, us to play a role in that planning process. So I think that, you know, things are definitely moving in a good direction, we've been meeting on a regular basis, you know, I think in our initial meeting, we were kind of, you know, geez, should we meet every two or three months and I think we quickly realized that, you know, we need to, we found some areas where we can start working and we, we need to meet more regularly, at least in the beginning, and then hopefully have a plan that we can, we'll just be maintaining and, yeah, meeting less regularly. And that's, you know, and I, I think that'll continue to grow. We've also talked about, you know, how we do fire drills in the, in the schools and maybe enhancing some of those to be a little more realistic without being too challenging and, you know, hopefully to better prepare the students. We're going to be doing some safety walkthroughs with the fire prevention and school administration in the schools to proactively identify things that we can do to just make the school a safer situation if there is a rapid evacuation or something like that. So I think I'm really excited to be part of the team.
And if I could say one thing, I think, you know, we bring it up at the school building committee meetings and I try to bring it up at these meetings, but just so you know, Chief Russell and Chief Howe are also integral in the development of the new middle school. They've been on Zoom calls with us to talk about the design, to talk about the alarm system, to talk about blind spots, to talk about everything in the design of the new school. Additionally, Chief Russell and Chief Howe and Deputy Chief Woods were here, actually Deputy Chief Sands or Assistant Chief, I forget.
Assistant Chief.
Assistant Chief Sands, were here last week as Left Field and JCG came on and talked about the fencing staging and what the impact to fire and police would be. So they are really taking a hands-on approach with the development of the new school as well, so we thank you for your time with that as well, appreciate it.
You know, I, I see this as one of the most important thing, parts of my job, really. I mean, we have a sizable school population and, you know, it's, it's an important part of our planning.
Does anybody on the committee have any questions for Chief Russell?
I do. Thanks for coming tonight, I love hearing from, you know, different groups in town. As you walk around the schools and the campuses, you know, we're going to be coming up on budget season soon, is there anything you see that we may need to consider as we get ready for next year's budget? You don't have to answer that now, you know, you can get back to us.
Yeah, find more storage space. I know that's every administrator's, I, I have a, a significant part of my career was in hospital emergency planning and storage space is, is always a challenge and so when you can't store things, where does it end up? In the way, right, in the hallways and stuff, and that's, that's one of the things that we're going to kind of proactively look at is how to keep the hallways and exit ways safe on a continually basis. And it's, I know, it's a challenge, you know, you know, whenever, and hopefully in the new middle school, I mean, it's, you know, we talk about potentially a new public safety building, you know, we keep reminding them, we need, we need places to store things, they can't just be piling up in the hallways, but, no, I say just put faith in your team and I think that as we move forward, you know, maybe that team will grow and to have some other people in the school that are using the plan as opposed to just administering a plan, you know, be part of the process, you know? But budget-wise, yeah, I, I don't have any specific suggestions, no.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you for coming tonight, Chief Russell.
You're welcome.
Also, thank you for all the time, I want to echo what Dr. Flanagan said, for all the time that you're putting into this middle school project, you know, on top of your regular job that you put in a tremendous amount of work.
And as you mentioned, I lean on Assistant Chief Sands heavily when it comes to the building stuff, so.
Yeah, okay, well, thanks to Assistant Chief Sands as well, I appreciate it and thank you for coming tonight.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number seven, which is subcommittee update, we will defer that to nine B where Capital Asset will provide an update. And for unfinished business, teaching and learning, Mr. Woodlock?
Okay, thank you. So one of the things we really wanted to spotlight as part of our SDI and efforts in our teaching and learning environment are just, you know, some of the things that are happening already at various schools, and this is really just a quick spotlight and it doesn't demonstrate the, the scope of what's going on, but we wanted to highlight some really amazing things that are happening in each of our schools. And so with our curriculum council team and discussions that we've had over the past week with that group of teacher leaders, in addition to feedback that I've received from the principals, we just, we're going to highlight a few teachers, but again, I want to say this, this isn't everyone. So at Tingsboro Elementary School, we're giving a bit of a shout out to Ally Bishop, who's a first grade teacher, and Ally has really been focused on the planning aspect of being inclusive in her classroom. She is already very inclusive, she's a very progressive teacher, a wonderful teacher, but she's trying to get even better, which is what we want from our teachers. So she's been working and taking a real collaborative approach, working with English learning teachers, working with paraprofessionals, reading specialists, service providers, to really try and look at her lessons from the outset and what barriers might exist for students in her classrooms. Traditionally, you know, we set up classrooms and we create a lesson and then we backpedal when we need to, to meet the needs of various students. She's trying to be really proactive about that and she's, she's bringing a lot of people into the fold and it's been working really well, so we wanted to commend her on that. Katie Leahy is one of our teacher leaders at the middle school and she's taken it upon herself in her meetings with her fellow teachers to really look at, like, what are we doing for our inclusive practice? And so she's been kind of modeling, like, let's have discussions about this and we, one of the things we talk about with our teachers is the best professional development is right here in our schools. So as an administrator, the first thing I noticed when I, when I became an administrator, when I got to walk into all of the different classrooms, was how much great teaching there was. And when we're teachers in the classroom, you, it's not that you're alone, but you're almost in a silo and you don't get to see all the great things that are happening. So Katie really wanted to say, like, what are we doing? We're trying to be more inclusive, what have you tried? And so she's hosting those conversations and she's, they're learning from each other, which is a really great model for our students. And at the high school, we wanted, we had a meeting here with some of our teacher leaders and Betsy Spear, who is one of our social studies teachers, talked about, you know, her first challenges with an advanced placement class. And you may think, like, oh, they're AP students, they're all like amazing students and they all have no problem with school, but that's really not the case. And they all have different, you know, skills that need to be developed, they have strengths and weaknesses like any other student. And so you can't just go in there, teaching an advanced placement class, you know, it's kind of prescriptive because you are teaching to a test, which is not what we really love to do, but she's found ways to really provide a lot of options for students to access information. And in advanced placement US history, some of the material is really dense, really difficult, and not all students are ready to take that in. So she's really tried to find options for students to access materials in different ways so that they will be able to be there when it's time for AP testing. So I wanted to just say thank you to those teachers who are kind of going the extra mile. And again, this is a representative group of our whole staff that are, that are taking, are making efforts to be more inclusive in all that they do, or they've already been really inclusive and now they're actually talking about it and sharing it out, and I think that's how we all get better. So I just want to say thank you to our teachers, they're doing a great job.
We'll move on to the building update.
I feel like I'm getting all easy tonight, there's really not much of an update.
Okay.
Our meeting for Monday was canceled about the color palette, it's got pushed till next week. I do know that the original color palette that was discussed for the school, where the theme was the four seasons, so I'll learn more about that when the time comes, not necessarily my forte, but we'll figure it out. So that meeting got moved to next Monday, the twenty-first. We do have a school building committee meeting scheduled for November thirtieth and in my most recent communication with our OPM, David Sanders from Left Field, we are on track still for a first week or early December submission of the detailed design to the MSBA for approval. So we continue to plug along with paperwork, they continue to plug along, they've had some successful meetings with CONCOM and I know that they have a whole schedule, they're working with the town and building inspector Paul Welkum and Matt Hanson to really map out what all the permitting processes will be, so we're, we're moving right along in the right direction here.
All right, great. Any questions for Mr. Woodlock on the curriculum assessment update or Dr. Flanagan on the TMS building project?
Is there a deadline in December or is that just when we're going to be ready?
That's when we're going to be ready.
Okay.
Just to go back to eight A, Mr. Woodlock, thanks for, you know, speaking on some of the specifics of the different classrooms, you know, we're all here for the kids and it's nice to hear different angles on what's going on in the classroom, so great to hear that. Nine B, Capital Asset, who's providing that update?
I will, Madam Chair. Capital Asset met this evening, we have to put in our recommendations, we, we will be recommending to the whole committee Pierce Field upgrades, the scoreboard and the sound system. If you've been to any of the sporting events out there, you will see that our scoreboard does not work. A lot of times the clock will read eight, 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 eight because all the lights are broken. The sound system is getting, it's ten, twelve years old, it's horrible. Purchased, I believe, in two thousand and eleven. So we'll be looking for forty-five thousand for the new Pierce Field upgrades for the scoreboard and sound system. And then the Tingsboro Elementary School elevator repair, it's a hundred and fifty thousand, we've put it off for the last two years. This needs to get done, so.
What's, if you don't mind me asking?
Yes.
The elevator repair, does the elevator not work right now, are they unable to use it, what's, what's going on?
It's currently working, however, could stop working at any time. We've, Dr. Flanagan might be able to give us a better explanation or?
So Mr. McSine has the issue on it.
So, so yes, that's, that is the, the front elevator as you come into the building. We've replaced the jack on that, but this is the additional, additional repairs that need to be done. Buckley Elevator that's coming has, assesses our elevators on a, on a semi-annual basis to, to review them and this is an item they've targeted and we've essentially told them at this point, you got to keep it working, we have to do, even if it's piecemeal, to find parts and everything, to keep it working, but this, this is the overhaul that Buckley Elevator actually said we needed to have done last year. So it's, it's an item that got pushed off when the playground got moved up to, to both phases. At once, the Capital Asset Committee for the town pushed the elevator repair as well as the bleachers into this year.
Right, thank you for that.
So the Capital Asset Group will be looking for a motion to approve those two items, the Pierce Field upgrade scoreboard and sound system for forty-five thousand and the Tingsboro Elementary School elevator repair for a hundred and fifty thousand.
Would anybody like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Is there any discussion? I just want to say, I support both Pierce Field, I've been to several games there and it's frustrating when you can't see what's going on because the scoreboard's not working and, you know, I've had the question come to me, or more so the comment come to me as a parent, not as a school committee member, of what's going on with the scoreboard, did they just not want to run it tonight? So it's noticed by people from Tingsboro, it's noticed by visitors and our students put a lot into their athletics, so it would be nice to have a word with the scoreboard.
We also rent this out to, if I may, we also rent this out to adult programs and other organizations, so having that scoreboard for them when they rent it would be very helpful as well.
Dustine? From a group in town that I'm a part of, the girls' softball program, which won the states a couple of years ago, they are actively right now fundraising to be able to buy their own scoreboard for the field, so it's, I think it would be hard to say that one sports teams in the, in the district are more important than others when there's a sports team who is looking to fundraise to buy their own and we're going to fund and repair one that is there, do you see where I'm going? So it's kind of a little unfair and?
Where's the scoreboard for the girls?
The girls' softball team is right now fundraising to find and purchase a scoreboard.
For the elementary school?
For the elementary school, yes. So I think it, it wouldn't be necessarily fair in some respects where you have, you know, one team getting repaired and one doesn't even have any and are actively fundraising and coming up with strategies on how to come up with the money for it.
Well, I think Pierce Field covers more than one team.
Oh, it covers seven.
And more than one sport.
And more than one sport, yeah, but so, I mean, we, we have?
It's the football, soccer, lacrosse.
Soccer, football, lacrosse, field hockey.
I'm just giving feedback on how I know that people might perceive that.
Sure.
So my daughter plays softball, obviously I'm very invested in the softball program. I don't know if the softball group has ever come before the school committee requesting a scoreboard. If you?
I'm not aware that they have.
I don't know if they know that they can, and that's where I'm just presenting that other?
Yeah, I, I think it's something we should look at, you know, for the future also is, I never even realized, it didn't dawn on me that that should be a need. I think baseball and softball scoreboards are usually much smaller and a little less low-key than football scoreboards, just by their nature, so I think there's probably something we can do over there that's cheaper than this, but that still doesn't take away the need for the scoreboard.
No, it doesn't. I, I've, I've watched many a sports games at that and it's great having the scoreboard and I would absolutely support it, just like I would absolutely support a scoreboard for all the other sports in town.
No, I agree, I think that's something we can?
It's not something I'm against, I'm just?
Yeah, but there's, there's no scoreboard over there at all on the elementary school grounds and we have more than?
I don't think so.
We have more than just a softball field there.
Yeah.
Softball, baseball.
Soccer, lacrosse.
Yeah.
Lacrosse plays there, youth football is a field over there, I think, I don't know if they have?
Soccer plays there.
Soccer, yeah, so.
Soccer plays, most of their games there.
It might be worth looking into a scoreboard that would fit several different sports over there.
The other component to think of is, is games that are, or are sports that are contingent upon time, right, you need the running time.
Right.
Which baseball and softball obviously don't have, but certainly if we're going to do it somewhere, it could absolutely be looked at. But certainly, if we're going to do it somewhere, it could absolutely be looked at everywhere.
Yeah.
But I, I do not know, Mrs. Palomo has not had this conversation or come forward with this. I don't know if she's aware.
She might not be. I, I just know that, right now, that that is what the softball team is actively fundraising for, where we're strategizing, we created a nonprofit and?
Yeah, it's probably worth having a conversation, and it may make sense to wait until the softball field of the middle school is done. Or does that come with the scoreboard?
Well, I think we're getting a little off target because we're talking about the capital asset plan right now and really finding an initial for the capital.
Right, yes.
If this is an FY24 budget discussion, we can have that conversation too in the athletic budget. So certainly something that we will follow up with Mr. Palomo and come back to the committee with. More information.
Are there any further comments or discussion about the capital asset plan as proposed? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? That carries seven zero zero.
Thank you, everyone. Mr. McMahon and Mr. Messina play a big role in that as well, so.
Great, well, thank you both. Thank you. Moving on to finance, Mr. Messina.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For signing of bills, there were nine bill warrants presented at the committee tonight. I do have them all back approved. In your drive, as always, is the list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts. And for signing of payrolls, since we last reviewed payroll, there were two pay dates. The payday of October 24th, as well as the payday of November 7th. And again, in your drive is the list of warrant numbers and amounts of payroll. And that is it tonight.
And school committee discussion, Nate, did you have anything?
Nothing at this time.
Jeff?
Nothing, thank you.
Justine?
I just want to congratulate the high school athletes that I'm starting to see getting signed to teams. And it's just exciting to see them getting ready for their next phase. And thank the chief of the fire department for coming in and chatting with us. It's always nice to hear what's going on on that other end.
Thanks, Justine. Mr. Woodlock?
I'm fine, thank you.
Mr. Messina?
I'm all set, thank you.
Last week, I had the pleasure of attending the high school's theater group's fall review. The kids did a wonderful job presenting songs from many different players. Not sure which ones they're planning on presenting this coming year, but any one of them would have been, would be wonderful to see. It was great seeing them come out and do such a fabulous job. Other than that, I am all set, thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Danielle?
Just, I would be remiss if I did not thank everybody involved in the TES playgrounds on behalf of my children tonight who asked me to do so. So a lot of excitement over at TES about those playgrounds. So thank you to all involved in getting, making those happen.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. McDonough, for coming and speaking tonight. I always enjoy when citizens come and speak to us. I don't think we get enough visitors, so thank you for that. Glad to hear the playground's open and good for those kids. Want to thank Chief Russell for coming out. I think it's important to maintain those relationships with our first responders. And I hope Chief Howe is feeling better. Thank you.
I'll echo all their comments and wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, yeah.
Enjoy your families.
Dr. Flanagan?
Ryan, thank you for coming out tonight, I really appreciate it. So next week, you'll be probably getting an email from me talking about how you'll learn about notifications for two-hour delays and/or cancellations. I'm hopeful that we don't drop below 32 degrees tonight and that we can have just rain in the morning. But we'll be up early checking the weather forecast. But as always, look through social media and look at your email because that's where you'll be notified first about cancellations and delays.
Great, thank you.
Is the text message still working?
It is.
Okay.
Okay. I guess we're on that season now.
Faster than expected.
Yeah. Chief Russell and Howe, thank you both for coming and to your departments for all the work that you put in supporting our school community as well as our school building project. Thank you to our community members for speaking tonight. As Ryan said, we really love to hear from our community members. And while we don't typically comment back, we do take the feedback and discuss it within subcommittee if there's, you know, if it relates to a specific subcommittee, and we'll provide that feedback. And with that, we do not have any need for executive session, so I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? That carries seven zero zero. We're adjourned, thank you.